Yeah, I don't know. They just reassigned me.
Good.
It works stuff now, you know. When I called Janet, it was messed up. They didn't have it. Yeah, it was messed up when I tried. And then they fixed it and it worked fine.
Make sure everybody can get in.
Yeah, golf pilot.
Speak up.
Well, my neighbor is selling, getting ready to sell the house. He's doing, he's draining it and taking it down. He goes, because people don't want to buy a house with him. Taking it out.
I heard you.
It's twenty, it's twenty years old to boot.
We'll try it.
Someone else will have to dispose of it.
My three neighbors call it. If they use them five days a year.
It's a liability, yeah. And the chemicals, and the chemicals are a liability.
You just have to remember to put them on when we're talking. It's the time of year when I lose my voice again, so I really. Every fall, every fall, I lose my voice. Oh, so don't leave.
You won't even get five days.
Okay, at the end, I mean, at the end, we shouldn't take too long. We're at seven thirty, everyone. Do you want to get started? It is seven thirty-two. Should we get started?
We need one more, Janet.
Um, that's, can we share for the meeting?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Ruth, and I am the chairman of the zoning board for tonight's meeting. Public meeting of the clerk board of adjustment is called to order, and this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. As adequate notice for this meeting has been provided by mailing the annual schedule of meetings to the Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and Union County Hawk, and by posting such annual meeting schedule on the bulletin board in the town hall reserved for such announcements, and the filing of said notice with the township of Clark Clerk. Formal action may be taken at this meeting. I ask everyone to stand for pledge allegiance and moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Madam Secretary, have her own call.
Mark Hayden.
Here.
William Howell.
Here.
Thomas Mead.
Here.
Douglas Crock.
Here.
Chris Tierney.
Here.
John Calliguyer.
Here.
And Ed Ruth.
Here. All right, the second item on our agenda is administering the oath of allegiance to two of our members, John Calliguyer and Chris Tierney and Kelly.
We did have an opportunity to do that before the hearing, so they are all set.
Thank you. Next item, review the minutes of our January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five general meeting and a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you, Tom. Have a second. Second by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board has approved the minutes. Any correspondence at this point? Janet? Janet, any correspondence?
Uh, no correspondence, no.
Thank you. All right, our calendar case is number three dash twenty-five. Steve O'Lonigan of Two Grouse Lane here in Clark.
Chairman, good evening. My name is James First. I'm here as the attorney for the applicant, the O'Loughlins. I have only two witnesses this evening. I have Elizabeth O'Loughlin, who is the homeowner, and I have Mr. Jerry Goldie, who is with the pool company. I will apologize in advance. I may, I have to have back surgery on Tuesday, so if you see me move or act weird, or if I fall over, please someone pick me up. I should be okay with the standing for the short time, but we'll see how many questions you ask. And if I just need to sit down for a moment, I ask your indulgence on that. Thank you. So I'm here representing the O'Loughlin family. You see through the application what they're asking to do is they're asking to build a pool in their, in their, what I'll call, the rear yard. Unfortunately, technically applying your ordinance, we have a side yard, and in that particular circumstance, I'm sorry, we have a corner lot, and in that particular circumstance where we have a corner lot, we have no rear yard. And when we have no rear yard, pools are prohibited in side yards, and therefore. No worries.
Get a little closer, yeah.
And therefore, and therefore, there is no way that this family could construct a pool in their home without this board's seal of approval. So we're here to ask for relief this evening with regards to the side yard variance so that this, so that the O'Loughlin family can undergo and enhance their property and build a pool. With that, go, Ms. Carey, you had a question?
I, I will just, for the board's benefit, I did speak with the township zoning officer when this application went in, and there is, there are two provisions in the township ordinances that are contradictory. One provision appears to try to give this type of property some leeway, and by allowing pools, they go to a side street. When you have, when you have a property like this in a corner, two, you basically have two front yards, where you picture the front yard of your house, and then the side yard of your house toward the side street. There's a provision in the code that looks like it's trying to give property owners leeway to have pools in those side yards that are front yards. There's another portion of the ordinance that says no pools in front yards, period. And because they're contradictory, talking to the zoning officer in an abundance of question, we don't want them to go ahead and build and have it determined at some point that they weren't allowed to do it. So they're, they're here, they're here for this application because we have contradictory provisions in the ordinance. The other portion of it is whether or not the front yard setback, the forty feet for a front yard, or the side yard setback, which is ten feet, which is what is required, would apply here. Again, to one way you read the ordinance, if you're saying it's allowed to be in this yard, then there's an argument the side yard, uh, ten feet applies. If it's really a front yard, then it's forty feet. So just to, you know, they've done their best and they comply. If you read it the one way, that they are permitted in the side yard for pools, and then it's a side yard variance, they're at eleven feet back, and ten feet is what you would need if that's the way you read it. If you, if you take the other part of the ordinance as the presidential one, then no pools in a front yard, period, and any accessory use would need a forty-foot setback. So I know the board has looked at these type of applications before. I know we've had pools in side yards. And when we do our annual report at the end of this year, we're going to highlight to council that this is something that needs to be addressed. We want clarification on which way they want us to hear it. But again, I know the boards looked at these before. I just wanted to understand, you know, they've had to come to us because we've determined, the zoning officer and I determined it's contradictory, and I can't give them clear answer or the direction. So this board are really looking for you to say, is, you know, is this something that the township will approve or not at this point? And it really is in your, what you think is appropriate for the town and for the location, because the ordinance is not clear. Okay?
And the request is relief from both variances. So the board, if you find favorably, you don't need to decide which is right and which is wrong, or which applies and which does not. We're asking for relief from both, so that way there's no question if there's an application of this later, or if someone points to this board's actions, even though it stands alone and says, well, they said it was this, we're asking for relief under both. Also, our relief is requested under both C-one and C-two. C-one, obviously, there's a hardship here because we're on a side yard with some contradiction in your ordinance, but we also believe that under C-two, the benefits of improving this property in the manner which we are requesting outweighs any detriment to the neighborhood or any of the, any public good. With that, I call Ms. Elizabeth O'Loughlin to testify.
You come on up, we'll get you sworn in. Okay, just hold it nice and close, we can hear you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and just state your name for the record, please.
Elizabeth O'Loughlin.
And your, your address?
To Grouse Lane.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Elizabeth, just if you could tell the board a little bit about yourself, how long you've been here, who you are, your family, what you do, just give them a flavor of the O'Loughlin family.
So again, my name is Elizabeth, and we moved to Clark three years ago. We lived in the local area, but we were looking for a nice, small community, and we really did our job of investing. We liked everything we heard about the town. I'm married. Unfortunately, my husband cannot be here because he is away on a business trip. We have three lovely children that are six, eight, and one. And we're honestly just looking to make this our forever home. We want to have a place for them to go outside and play and just have a safe place, a safe space for them right in the town. I also work in the town, so I'm vested, and I'm really looking to make this our last stop and never have to move again from this town.
Great. All right, I'm going to show you some photographs, and I will just state for the record, the board has these, will mark them as we go. Ms. Carey, the first packet will be the ones with the pictures of the home on it. I'm going to mark them A-one through four as we go through them. I will represent to the board.
You can, you can mark the packet as A-one if you want to, and we'll do the second packet as A-two.
Okay, great, I'll do that.
Make it easier.
And I will note for the board, and Ms. O'Loughlin will confirm, that these are accurate representations of the property and the neighborhood as it appears in relative time. These were not taken ten minutes ago, but this is how it appears today if you were to go to the home. So Elizabeth, if you would just look at what we've marked as A-one, I'll mark that on the back. The first photograph, what do you see in that photograph?
It's a picture of our front yard.
That's your front yard. You understand that to be the front of your home, correct?
Yes.
And that portion of your home, what you consider the front, where the front porch is, that fronts on what street?
Part, uh, excuse me, on Grouse Lane.
Okay. And then we see on the second page, we see, this is a rear shot of your home from your patio, showing into your yard. You intend to, your intention would be to construct the pool in the area behind this shrub.
Correct.
And behind that, we see a tree row. Just describe for us what I'll call the backyard of your home where we see those trees. There's trees in the rear of your home?
There are trees.
And is that a, a, a tree line? Is it a thicket? Is it a little bit of a, of a small forest? What exactly is that?
It's a little tree line that the parkway backs on behind it.
Okay, so realistically, your rear yard neighbor, the person or the entity that would be behind you as we orient your home to Osborne, is the Garden State Parkway?
Correct.
Page three, what are we looking at here?
Our side yard.
All right, and we see a driveway here to the left, on the lower left, correct?
Correct.
And there's a car, white car in the middle of the roadway, and what street is this?
That's Partridge Run.
And that Partridge Run, that street actually only serves three homes in your neighborhood, is that correct?
Correct.
Yours, and then there's the one directly across the street.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a driveway to the right of that home, also served by this street.
Yes.
And if I were to take Partridge and I would go to the end of it, what's at the end of the street?
Uh, it's a dead end, and there's a hill at the top.
Okay, and it's the same tree line that we see there, right?
Correct.
And behind that tree line, what's behind that? Is there any chance that Partridge would run through there, or that it would continue at some future date?
Uh, no, there's a house actually built there.
Okay. And then we have page four. Page four is another view. We see on the side here, we see it's this Partridge Run, and there's a house here on the right. Can you tell us whose house that is?
That is our neighbor on our side street.
Okay, so if they're looking out their front door, they would be looking at where you intend to construct your pool, correct?
Correct.
And that house is serviced by Partridge?
Yes.
And behind them, we see the same tree line, and it looks like we can see some houses back there. There's some homes behind there. They're not necessarily backing up to the parkway.
Uh, correct.
Okay. Is there a lot of traffic on this street at all, or is it just the three of you going in and out of your driveways?
Just the people driving in.
Okay. Do they pave it in the, uh, do they plow it in the winter? Does the town plow it?
Yes.
So it is a town street.
Yes.
But only three homes are utilized.
Correct.
All right. We then go to, I guess, what I'll mark as A-two. These, I apologize, my assistant stapled these a little bit out of order. So we're actually going to start with the third page of exhibit A-two. I'll hold it up so the board can see the reference. Elizabeth, this is an overhead view of your home in the upper left. We see it's marked Two Grouse Lane overhead, and there's a red box with a little yellow marking on it. That's your home, correct?
Yes.
And we can see behind your home, we see the trees that you just referenced.
Yes.
And we see at the end of the street that home. So there's no possibility that that street could ever be extended because of what's behind there?
Correct.
Okay. In this picture, do we know how many homes we see, which you consider to be your neighborhood?
There's thirty-one houses.
Okay. And we see, we can see, this is a summer photo, so we see these blue plots here and there. What are those, and how many of those are there?
There are pools, and there's fourteen in our neighborhood.
So fourteen of the thirty-one homes in your neighborhood already have pools?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and again, we see a look, your neighbor to the left, you see your neighbor there, that's a pool in their rear yard, correct?
Yes.
And you understand that if this street wasn't here, and if you were an interior lot, we wouldn't have to be before the board, and you would be, have been able to construct your pool, correct?
Yes.
Did you know that when you bought it?
No.
All right. And there are a few instances, as you understand, where there are actually pools constructed in a similar manner to what you're asking, on corner lots, correct?
Yes.
For the board's reference, we'll then turn to page four of that. On this slide, we see red boxes, and those red boxes are delineating where the pools are in the neighborhood, correct?
Yes.
And there are two locations in the neighborhood where there are pools in side yards. That would be position D, correct?
Yes.
And position F?
Yes.
Okay. Now, D, the address on D is Ten Rolling Hill Way. If the board refers to page six of that exhibit, you will see the, uh, close-ups of those properties. Ten Rolling Hill Way, and that's a representation of that home, and that home is on a corner lot, correct?
Yes.
And they have a pool in their, what I guess would be their rear yard, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, their lot is different configuration from yours, so while they're on a corner, that pool is on the inside, it's not on the outside, correct?
Yes.
Not in the front yard, as you might understand that to be, just generally looking at it, correct?
Correct.
But nevertheless, that is an example of a corner lot with a pool on it.
Yes.
More importantly, we refer to F. F is a property located at six oh five Madison Hill Road. You see that on the sheet?
Yes.
And that fronts on Madison Hill Road, and then, do you know the side street here?
That's Rolling Hill Way.
Okay, so that is on the corner of Madison Hill and Rolling Hill.
Correct.
And that property has a pool as we see it here.
Yep.
And you're familiar with that? I know we printed these off the internet or got them from, from Google Earth, but you're familiar with this? You drive by this every day on your way to school as a Clark school teacher and, and taking your children to various soccer practices, et cetera. And is that an accurate representation of what exists at six oh five Madison Hill Road, generally speaking today?
Yes.
And we see that that pool there is existing upon Rolling Hill Way, correct?
Correct.
Now, you haven't gone out there and measured the setback for that pool, have you?
No.
But we can state as a layperson, it's relatively close to the road.
Correct.
And while the configuration may be different, similarly situated, that is a type of location where you're asking for your pool to be located.
Yes.
Would you say that Rolling Hill Way is a street that is more or less utilized than Partridge Run?
It's definitely more utilized.
Because only three people are using Partridge Run.
And you can't get in and out of our neighborhood without going down the street.
Exactly. So this is the only entrance. So everyone that comes into your neighborhood, approximately those twenty-five or thirty-one homes, has to pass by this property in order to get into your neighborhood, into your homes.
Yep.
So these are examples of corner lots and of the situation, similar to your situation, where you would like a pool on your yard.
Yep.
Okay. Now, we've chosen a location for the pool, which we'll get to in a minute, but in terms of discussing that, we have Jerry here who will testify next. You asked for the location of the pool to be in the side yard, and you asked for it to be ten feet from the property line, is that correct?
Correct.
Why is it that you and Jerry and your husband decided that that was the proper location that you would like to build this pool?
For starters, it's actually the area that gets the most sun in our yard, so it will kind of reduce environmental and cost impacts on energy. Secondly, for the safety of our three children, it will be set back further and can kind of be separated into its own section and not be contending with our, um, our patio, so it'll be kind of its own separate area away from our house. And thirdly, it leaves, it's, that's kind of more of an unlevel slanted area, whereas the other side is flat, and that would give us space to put the swing set and all the other recreational things we have for our children for their safety and not falling down better, because it's more level. And then it's also, we don't really have a choice, so we need a variance either way, so it would be the best place for us to put it.
Practically speaking, though, did you discuss with Jerry and the engineers about if you did push that pool back forty feet from Partridge Run, would that be allowable, I mean, would that be a, a space where you could still fit the pool, and would it have the same utilization as the location that you're suggesting?
I'm not sure if it was brought up personally.
Okay, that's fair enough, then. We'll ask Jerry that question. Okay, I have no further questions, Elizabeth. I turn you over to the board.
I drove by your home this afternoon just to check it out, so all the things that you're testifying to, I would substantiate. The fact that your side street is not utilized at all, I saw a basketball hoop at the end, so it's probably more for the children to play than anything else. Have you discussed the pool with your neighbor across the street?
They, they are aware we are trying to put a pool in, and they know the location, and they said good luck to us.
So no derogatory comments?
Not at all. Not at all.
Okay. Members, do you have any other questions? Or a witness? Anyone?
We're going to have Jerry testify with the site plan, which is in your packet. And Elizabeth, one last question. The house to your left, they have a pool, right?
Yes.
And the house across the street, the neighbor, they have a pool as well?
Correct.
So you're feeling left out, right?
A little bit.
Thank you.
Kids keep asking for it, because our old house had one, too, so.
Ah, okay. Great, thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, my next witness, Mr. Chair, is Jerry Goldie.
You just, get just sworn in. Let's raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And can you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Name is Jerome Goldie, G-O-U-L-D-E-Y.
Thank you. And you're offering him as a, is he an engineer? What is he?
He's, he's, he's from the pool company with expertise in installation, location, and, and generally speaking, pools.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Great. All right, Jerry, just give the board the benefit of your experiences. Let them know how long you've been doing this and, and who you work for, et cetera.
I'm from Anthony, Solent Pools. I've worked for them for fifty-five years in New Jersey, New York, Connecticut. We proposed to build an eighteen by thirty-five, finite swimming pool, which is concrete reinforced. It's going to have a jacuzzi on the backside, eight-foot diameter, and it's got a six-foot extension shelf for seating at the shallow end. Overall, it's got a length of eighteen by forty-one.
Um, and Jerry, in terms of the location of the pool, did you discuss with the O'Loughlins where would be the best position to construct a pool on this lot?
Originally, we talked about going behind the house, but the space limitations, the slope, if you notice, there's a wall there behind the pool, which is going to require drainage. There's already a drainage system in the yard. Proposed to connect to those drains, clean out the, I'm sorry?
I think the mic turned off. Hold on.
Oh, okay.
Talk right into it.
Talk right into it? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's a drainage system in the back that we're going to connect further after putting in the retaining wall in the pool, so that you've got proper drainage off of the property.
And Jerry, the location of the pool, the retaining wall, the drainage, that's all contained on what we previously provided to the board, noted as pool site plan prepared by Mark Mantala.
Yep.
With a date, a final revision date of April fourth, twenty-twenty-five, is that correct?
Yeah, Mark couldn't be here this evening. He's got a brother-in-law who's very ill in North Carolina. Mark's the former town engineer in Montville, so he has a lot of experience. He sat on the other side of the dais from, with the board.
So in terms of disturbance of soil and area and such, we have what we call the existing patio. We showed a photo of that to the board. We're going to leave that, and we're going to disturb only new area, and that is a sloped area that we're going to put some retaining walls to make sure that the yard is flat and that the property can be fully utilized by the O'Loughlin family, correct? Anything else you want to tell the board about the pool? I think we talked about what the construction material was. In terms of the location, you heard Elizabeth talk about the space that we wanted it, and you heard Ms. Carey talk about the ten yards, ten-foot setback versus the forty-foot setback. Why is it, in your professional opinion, that this is the best location for the pool on this lot?
I think because of the slope and the tree line crowding of the patio, as Elizabeth talked about with the children and whatnot. This appears to be an ideal location. I realize it's a street there, but it, from all intents and purposes, there are the three houses, and that's it. No development further because of the parkway behind it. That's my opinion.
Uh, with that, I have nothing further. The plans are sealed by the engineer, so I rely on the plans and what the plans state in terms of what the construction would consist of, what is requested to be built, the location, the drainage, the retaining wall, et cetera. Any details with regards to drainage or the construction materials for the retaining wall, I think if the board needs that to be a condition, we could certainly condition that upon engineer review and approval. With that, though, I turn Jerry over to the board for any questions you may have.
One question regarding the location.
Yes, sir.
Is this the actual design of the pool?
Yes, it is.
As shown on this exhibit? It was kind of really nestled into the corner of the backyard.
Yeah, if you'd done a rectangular or symmetrical pool, it really wouldn't have gone on that kind of angle. It would have gone straight across. So what we're trying to do is utilize as little land as possible there and tie it in with the slope.
And that's what we were talking about, the retaining wall behind it?
Yep. That's an interlocking block wall. You'll see the detail at the top of the print there as to how it would be built.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the board members for this witness?
Yeah, I have a question about the fence. Is this, will you be able to see through this fence?
Yes.
Like in, like how visible would you be able to see through? Is it like every, a couple inches every post, or how?
Yeah, there's four inches between. It's, looks like the old wrought iron. It's tubular aluminum. It's what's used today. The O'Loughlins certainly at some point can plant along it if they like it, but generally, this is the fence that's widely used.
Okay.
And the height of the fence meets?
54 inches.
54, yeah.
Oh, specifications that you need for a pool in the backyard?
Actually, four foot is what you need. The particular design of this fence is 54 inches.
Is how many? Feet?
54 inches, four and a half feet.
Four and a half feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's more than is required?
Yeah.
And of course, also all the appropriate pool required, locking gates and those kinds of things. No, also, just to your question, in the rear yard, of course, we have the trees, so we would have the fence there, but those would not impact anyone. And I would suspect, and if the board wanted it to be a condition, there's certainly some plantings in that 10-foot area between the property line and where the pool and fence would be located. I'm certain that the O'Loughlins intended to do that anyway, to show off the beauty of their home, but if the board wanted something...
I'm sure you get deer coming in through that area.
I would imagine so.
Just so I'm clear for the resolution, you're saying plantings between the pool and the fence line on the street side?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
You're going to want them for privacy? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further witnesses. If I may just summarize in 30 seconds or less. We obviously see that there's a technical discrepancy in your ordinance. We don't mind being here. We're glad that the board has viewed the application. It's always a good process for us to fully prepare these things and make sure that, you know, we know what we're doing and what we're building. You see, it is unique. Even for a corner lot, it's unique because of Partridge Run. That really is not a through street. It's basically an extension of the family's driveways for those three homes. The location of the lot with the parkway in the rear and the end of the street, et cetera. I think even if there was any reservation about a corner lot, I think there's no better lot that you could put this type of improvement on as a variance request. It, I think it kind of speaks for itself. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Thank you for having us on a Tuesday when there's no football on TV. That's great, too. Appreciate it. Go Bills. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate the fact that you answered all of Art's questions and your correspondence, so you did address his concern. May I have a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to pass.
I should approve, including the conditions that they offered, appellant putting landscaping between the fence and the sidewalk area there?
Correct.
I think it will, anyway, for privacy.
We have no problem with that being...
It'll be very general, so they can design it how they like.
All right. Second, Tom Mead, motion by Mark Hayden. Thank you. Roll call. Mark Hayden? Liam Helm?
Yes. Yes.
Thomas Mead?
Yes.
Douglas Crack?
Yes.
John Calligwar?
Yes.
Chris Tierney?
Yes.
And Ed Ruth?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good job with the presentation.
Yes. Very well done. Thank you very much. Our next item, I'm going to turn the mic over to Kelly to talk about the Publication Reform Act and the review of GovPilot, which I know we've all struggled to get on. Kelly, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. I actually do them in reverse order, they're listed. First, the Publication Reform Act. I don't know who we, if any of you still read the newspaper in print. They are disappearing from the state of New Jersey. So for years, in connection with land use, we've been arguing that the notice and publication requirements need to be updated and changed. But now, because actual newspapers are disappearing, the legislature is finally having to address this. So what they've done is this omnibus kind of statute that addresses all public bodies that have any kind of notice ever required. So it's not very specific to land use, and we will need at some point to figure out exactly how this board is going to do it. But for the overall, the new thing about it is that the state is requiring every township to now have on their websites a specific place to place public notices. And towns will no longer, after March, after March, be required to place publications in a print publication. They can put them on their website, and then there will be a link to a statewide database that's going to hold all public notices, so that, for the most part, will take care of general notices for the municipal council, for other boards, and things like that. There is also a provision that allows boards, in addition to that, to post them on an online publication. So like, the News Tribune, some of those have come together, and they've, for a number of years, already had public notices on an online listing. So my feeling is they'll continue to do that. What is going to be interesting to watch, how it shakes out, is what happens for planning board notices. Because unlike just have, like a council meeting when you're just noticing for the meeting dates, we also have these applicants that come in, and each individual application needs to notice for their application with very specific things detailed, like the variances that they need and things like that. So this legislation doesn't say specifically what to do in those instances, but in general, those have been instances where the applicant is required to do that notice. The board does the notice of the meeting, and then the applicant does the notice of the application. So in those instances, the new statute seems to say that the applicants will need to use these new online publications to do that. They will no longer be in a print newspaper. And they will, of course, still have to do the 200-foot mailed notice. That hasn't changed. What I think is going to be interesting to watch is whether or not, over time, townships and boards start to repost that individual public notice for the hearing on the township website that's now required to be there. Because the truth is, the public's going to go and want to look there for it. They're not, you know, I think there's going to be some adjustments, some growing pains as this, this goes into effect. But there will be some differences. If you see at the beginning of the meeting, we always check the, check the notice requirements, check the affidavit publication, check those little cards. So, you know, this is nothing that you guys have to specifically do. It's for Janet and I to figure out, but I just want you to be aware that there are changes coming up. And for the first few meetings, after next March, there'll probably be some, there may be some cancellations, there may be some issues with notices not being done because people are going to be in a learning process of getting through it.
Sure.
Yeah.
I can imagine that people are not computer savvy, and now they have to sign on that they received a notice.
Yeah.
On their computer.
It's going to be, yeah. Well, so this does not get rid of the mailed notice for the 200 feet. So that's still, that's still there for now. I think that certified mail is silly, because nobody gets it, but that's my own opinion. Something, that part has not changed. This is really dealing with the publication parts of it. And really, the unique part is that it requires every township to set up on their website, like a tab basically on your homepage that goes to all the public notices, and then the link to the state website, where all, they're going to be posted. So statewide, you can just go to one location. They haven't given the state very much time to do that. So there's also a possibility that they'll push back the implementation if they don't get that done yet. But this is what we're watching for the new year. And, you know, it's not up to this board, really, to do this, the council, the town's going to have to do it for every board, and then we'll just work with whatever, whatever they come up with. But just wanted to, it's out there, it's new, let you know.
Good. Appreciate that.
Sure. And then, more specifically, for this board, GovPilot. Does everybody, we just wanted to take some time and go through it and make sure everybody has gotten their login, been able to get on, and then talk about any issues you might have. Does anybody, we've handed out sort of a cheat sheet, I call it, for kind of how to get into it, once you have your username and password. Once you use it a few times, you start to get used to it. You really need to kind of go in and play around and click on the different, the kind of folder tabs there, learn how to get to the different portions of it. But has anybody not gotten their username and password? Everybody?
I haven't. Like, I haven't.
You haven't gotten your username and password? Okay. So we got to get him a username and password.
I didn't get me a username and password.
Oh, they never sent it to you?
No.
All right. We have this paper, we'll tell you how else. Right, Kelly? This will tell him how he can get on.
Right. So we got to get, we got to get you, resend the email to you to tell you how to get into it. Well, does he need, the very first time, does he need to go through their link? Or can he go in himself? The very first time, does he need to go through their link to sign in? Or can he just go in with his password, with his email and get in now? Yeah, John, yeah.
I could check tomorrow to just make sure. I know there was a little glitch going on.
Yeah. Make sure you two talk. And whether or not you can just use your email and get in, or whether or not you need to follow a link from them to set it up the first time, just figure that out.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to try this.
Okay. All right. And does anybody else have, want to, I mean, we could, I have my computer, we could pull it up, we can walk through it, or does everybody else feel like they've started to play with it and knows how to get into? And then, just to be sure, just to be clear, there are portions of it that are really meant for the people in the offices, and meant for the zoning inspector after he goes out, you know, where you input information, where you change things. Where it's not for you. Don't click on any of that. Hopefully, it's disabled. Hopefully, you can't click on any of it, but, you know, we really, for the board, we really just want you looking at things and then closing out of it, not, you're not trying to go in and change anything. You don't need, if there's any questions that say, you know, it's not for you guys to answer, it's really there for you to go in and to be able to look at the applications. There are, there is a part of it that's more interest, that's interesting, though. I mean, because you get some more of the property information. You basically can get into the property card for the lot. So that's more than the information than you used to always get for an application unless we had specifically asked for it and had somebody provide it to us. So there is, once you get used to it, there is more information about the property in there. And you can also go in, and some of them, and see.
You're playing the property card?
Yeah. And you can also usually go in and see if there've been prior applications or things that happened. So all that history is in there for you that you didn't always necessarily get unless we asked for it for an application. See some very determined faces. They're going to figure it out on their own. All right. That's it. We just, if you have, if you have any questions, just, you know, let Janet know. She can get you in touch with somebody. Make sure, you know, you're getting in there and getting familiar with it.
Just, if I may say so, you just really, Doug and I tried a few times to get in, and without enough information, you really need the cheat sheet. There's instructions they send to you when you log in the first time. That's what you need. So you need to have that in front of you, or anyone hasn't signed it. And once you do, then you have your password, you have your, you probably save your password when you're writing. It's just like any other website. It's just the first time logging in.
Well, the first time we logged in, it was wrong.
There was a glitch.
Yeah. There was no instructions either.
No, no. I had the instructions. It was just set up incorrectly. Janet approached the lady who does the planning, and she went in there and made sure the box said "planning." That was the issue. The instructions were right. It wasn't set up. She went in there and clicked something next to our names Janet said, and then it worked correctly. Moments after she did it, I was able to get right in.
Okay.
So that was the issue.
Thanks for clearing it up for me.
Yeah, it wasn't set, yeah, the whole thing just wasn't set up right.
Yeah.
Because I knew I was following the directions to a T, but I'm like, if you read this, it's not what it says it is. So I called Janet and told her, yeah, this isn't right. And then the lady fixed it. That's what happened.
And then after you've been in it and looked at an application, say you want to go back a second time, right when you get in, the ones you've looked at most recently are going to actually end up on the bottom.
Yep.
So you won't even have to click that for something you've looked at already. But every time you go to a new, a new meeting and a new hearing, you got to start with that, the red planning box again, to find the list to get the property you want to look at if it's new. But so, as you start using it, it'll get easier.
Yeah. What I was trying to say is, once you have that instruction street, for the first time logging, it's very helpful. And after that, it gets easy. Not Doug's first time, but anyone else.
It was messed up.
All right.
We had any conversations about that? Thank you very much, Kelly.
That's all I have.
All righty. Any other business for the board? Janet, anything else that you want to, you'd like to say or add to the meeting? No? All righty.
Keep the video going.
All right. Thank you all. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
We had one thing.
Oh.
You do have an application for next, next month. They're ready to go. They're hard copies. They're also in your GovPilot complete, so you can see them on there. On the way out, maybe I can get them to you. There's a whole stack of them in my car, and I didn't have the power, I have a broken finger here. So if I could get them to you tonight, that'd be good. I could get them out.
What is the address of the property?
Yeah.
What address?
60 Ridge Road, right, Janet?
Yes.
60 Ridge?
Ridge Road.
Thank you, Doug.
Yep.
Yeah. It was an empty lot about two months ago. Then I saw some things going on there, but...
Yeah, something may have started.
There was never nothing there?
I don't know if there ever was. I suspect that there was a house there.
I'm going to guess so, right?
I guess, but for...
Because no land, no land in Clark, this state, with nothing on it for very long.
All right. Well, we'll hear the application when it gets here.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Tom, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. For all of you, trying to get through Gov...
Yeah.
But I know who you're talking about. I had it. Came in an email or something, right? It was a...
Yeah, yeah.
These are notes?
But this was the whole problem. It said, "Click Planning." There was no planning box there. So I called Janet, I said, "Janet, it doesn't say planning. It said zoning." Every time I clicked on it, it just brought me nowhere. I said, "This ain't right." And then she went and talked, I guess, to the planning board. And she went in there and fixed it.
But this, you're not going to get right anyway.